Six o'clock. Six thirty. Six thirty, sorry.
Oh, there it goes. I didn't hold it long enough. Hey, I'm on now. Okay. I'd like to call the Lummester Planning Board. Meeting to order for August 18, 2025, in the City Council chambers. We have an opening statement by Elizabeth.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to the Lummester Planning Board meeting. We would like to explain the procedure for this meeting before we begin. Public hearings and open public meetings will be open per schedule on the agenda. Once a hearing or open public meeting is opened, the applicant will have the opportunity to make a presentation to the board. Once each applicant has presented, members of the planning board may have questions or comments before we invite members of the audience to comment in regards to the application. Prior to inviting your comments, however, we read into the record all written comments from individuals who could not be present this evening. And if anything's continued to the next meeting, we're not going to take any comments from the board and we're not going to take any comments from the public. Anyone who wishes to speak may approach the podium and must state their full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a two-minute timeframe. Other than speaking from the podium, members of the public are requested not to speak out loud during the meeting. To avoid redundancy, if a comment has previously been made by another person, you can simply state that you agree or disagree with what was mentioned. Please only speak if you have a new matter to raise to the board's standing consideration. All comments are made through the chairman and not to be addressed to the applicant directly. If the chairman would like further clarification, he will ask the applicant directly to respond. Once all public comments have been noted, applicants will be discussed individually by the planning board. The planning board will then vote to either close or continue each respective meeting or open public meeting. We will then open our regular public planning board meeting. When we reach the applications on the agenda, the board will vote on the applications. Also, we want to remind everyone to be respectful and to ensure everyone has silenced their phones. And that's it.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the 6:30 to continue the open public meeting for site plan application for 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive, map 386, block 4, lot 1C, multifamily residential development. Elizabeth, do you have a communication?
I have a communication from the applicant. They have requested this item be continued to September 15. The next time period that we have something at 6:30, so it would be after that.
Okay.
So I would move to-
Will it be 6:30 or not?
We have something at 6:30, so it has to be 6:35, 6:40.
I move to continue the hearing until September, what's the date? September 15 at 6:35.
You hold that folks, there'll be no discussion on this tonight. Okay, the applicant, excuse me, the applicant is not here. Okay. They have sent a letter requesting continuance because of the issues at the Conservation Commission. Most of you were at the Conservation Commission, and I was there for part of it. So I believe most of the issues were covered. I will recognize Mr. Brady.
Hi, Bill Brady, 214 Harmon Street. I just want to make an observation. This is an open meeting. According to the open meeting law in Massachusetts, public hearings, not having comments is up to the board's discretion. It's absolutely to your discretion. I think a lot of people spent a lot of time coming here tonight and deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm sorry. This has been our standard procedure. I think we told a lot of people, and there were people that were told in advance that this meeting would be continued, okay? There were other legal issues that we run into, and I just can't afford to do that. I'm sorry. But it is not a procedure we decided tonight. This has been the procedure for this council as long as I can remember. That the applicant is not here and has requested in writing a continuance, we give the applicant that benefit. He's not here to defend himself. Just like any court, you're afford to listen and defend yourself. So it's not a court. I'm not saying it's a court. But it's a matter of issue where information is given and received. And I want it to be received equally for everybody. Okay? So I have a motion on the floor to continue to September 15 to 6:45.
6:35.
Oh, 6:35, rather. Not, it's just, after the vote, please. I'll take a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Yeah, the procedure is not to-
Yes, I will open up if you have a general question.
Hi, Kristen Howell at 33 Sky Lane. As an abutter to that project, my general question is, I asked about a barrier. I hate to say the word fence because I'm not sure what I'm looking for. They nodded, and I've heard nothing. And I didn't expect to hear anything. My question is, is it in this board's purview to require some type of barrier or fence? Or you're not even allowed to do that?
We can't discuss that tonight. We have to wait until the applicant's here.
Excuse me, Elizabeth. I won't discuss the barrier. I'll discuss our procedure.
Okay.
Okay? We have in the past, in a number of cases, put up fences. We just did that recently. The old-
Bassett Street. Bassett Street.
Yeah, no, no. On Bassett Street, we did it. We also did it on the apartments we just did on Lancaster Street. And there was some change across, okay? And actually, there's another job going to be in there in the old restaurant. Okay? And there was neighborhood back there had an issue with car lights and their fence. And that was part of our conditions, was to fix that fence and do that. We've done that several times up by the hospital. When we did the hospital, there were a number of cases where it was done there. So yes, can it happen? Yes, it can. Will it happen until it comes in and it comes to me? I can't address that.
So procedurally, what do I do to make sure that I don't miss an opportunity? I didn't know there was a delay to me.
We just, we got that in. And I agree, in writing is the most precise way. Give us a quick note, email. And anything that comes to us in writing is read at the meeting. Okay? So if you want to do that, if you have an issue, you're going to be traveling and you want to cover an issue, just give it to us in writing. We'll accept it and be read at the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Sorry, folks, I know you've all been here for this. But it's a procedure that we've had in longstanding. It's nothing new. Thank you very much. I'm going to call to order, please.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Sal Chaconi excused, Cara Vittorioso excused, Tom Kergnen. Jason Paray. Dean Bowyer.
Present.
John Souza.
Here. Okay, minutes. We had June 2, 2025. Have a motion made and seconded to accept June 26, uh, June 2. Have no additions, deletions, or corrections. I'll call for the order. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. June 16, 2025. I have a correction. On page 23.
Okay, give me a minute. Twenty-three, twenty, no, no.
The sentence ahead says, we have to move-
Page 23?
Page 23.
Got it.
It should have to be the- We have to move forward and we have to make a discussion. You can't have a discussion as a decision.
Where are we, on page 23?
In about halfway down. Okay? It's, well, on the left-hand side, find the word forward. That sentence.
Yes, forward. Forward.
Okay. Yeah, clerical.
And we, I'm there. What are we changing?
We have to move forward and we have to make a decision. The decision, you know, make a, it just didn't read right to me at the time I did it. To move forward. Rebound the points that one returned. I guess it's all right. When I looked at it, I did it. Have a motion made and asked to accept. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Site plan application for 1030 Central Street, map 317, partial eight Pine Hill 2, assisted living facility. This has to be scheduled.
So I'm thinking October now because I don't want to put anything beyond this if they're really going to come back in September.
Meeting twice in September?
Once in September.
So what's the first October meeting?
October 6.
So I move to schedule this October 6 at 6:30, assuming that's open.
Yeah, October 6 at 6:30. Any problem with that? Have a motion made to schedule site plan application for 1030 Central Street for 6:30, October 6 at 6:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. 3.2, special permit application for 488 Main Street, map 241, parcel 1, scrap metal recycling.
I move we schedule that October, I'm sorry, what was that? October 6 at 6:35?
Okay. This should be a real, well, it may be an easy one, I'm not sure. The Pine Hill is not going to be-
No, it'll be good.
We need at least a half, fifteen and a half, half an hour there.
Just in case. Yep, 6:35 is good.
Okay. I have a motion for 3.2 for 6:35 on October 6. Any discussion here and now? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 3.3, definitive subdivision application. Ruth Street, map 143, parcel 187. Liberty Street Extension Subdivision.
For the record, I have some housekeeping matter on this one.
What's that?
I have a housekeeping matter on this one, Chair.
Okay.
We had an address update from the building department on this, so it's now called 68 Liberty Street. On GIS, it says Ruth Street, so it's a little confusing. But it is now officially, per the city records, 68 Liberty Street.
68 Liberty Street, okay.
And I move we schedule that for October 6 at 6:40.
Have a motion made at October 6 at 6:40. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Old business, site plan application, 86 Orchard Hill Park Drive, map 386, block 4, lot 1C, multifamily residential development. Okay? This has been continued. New business, communications. Modification of site plan for 186 and 196 Main Street, map 56, parcel 5. The board will vote to whether this is a major or minor modification. This is deemed a minor, and then the board will review the application at the meeting. If it is deemed major, it will be scheduled for open meeting. So we have the-
Has to be open. Can you speak into the mic bell, please? Thanks.
That one on the desk should work.
No, no, I'm looking for the board for their computer.
Oh, I have one.
Well done.
Oh, I like that. I think we should have that.
That one, Elizabeth training gave me that. He signed up for it. What do you need, Bill?
Get the right one, Bill. We don't want the exaggerated one.
Hello, all right. Live TV. Okay, for the record, Bill Hennigan with Hennigan Engineering. This is a minor modification relative to the site at 196 Main Street. This site originally was approved by the planning board back in 2022. It is stated in the letter at the time, Dan Piper of Piper Electric was looking at having this building being for office space for lease of tenants. At the time, his office was within the 186 Main Street building, and they had, I mean, building number one. And then he also had a warehouse building in the back, building number two. Since that time, he has sold the company and he's nearing retirement. And the new company has decided to use, to basically move the office space from building number one into the 196 building. So the other two buildings are now used for storage of equipment and materials for the electrical business that they run out of that site. So the office is now occupied by the company, still called Piper Electric, but now it's a division of another firm, I believe, out of Western Mass. In this plan here, we had shown, and we still show, the entrance area. And the difference is with the use on the property and how it's, how it's used is that back then, Dan had a lot smaller vehicles. He had deliveries by box truck, by UPS, by FedEx, et cetera, for materials. Where this company is a larger firm, they actually have trucks that come in that are tractor-trailer trucks, and they have two to three deliveries a week into this site. So the orientation of the parking and the islands that were developed under the original approval have not been installed and have, you know, were proposed to basically restripe the lot to what's on the plan right now. As part of the review, what we did was we looked at the impervious area that was created above and beyond what was originally approved. That's requiring an expansion of the drainage system in this area right in here. So that's actually an expansion of the drainage system that's already in there. It essentially doubles in size. So that'll be part of what we have to do for the construction. There's also some work to be done up near the main entrance in this area here relative to slope and grade of the handicap accessible spaces. So that is work that'll be done on-site as well. As part of this, he's also been working with the neighbor. He's been letting the neighbor park on his property for a number of years, and now it's going to be more formalized into an easement agreement for the parking. So these four spaces in this area here are going to be designated for the 184 building. There'll be an access and parking easement for that. And the spaces that he needs are the ones that are double-circled, and those would be the ones that would be the two, the four, the three, and the three. And that gets him the required parking that he needs for the office building. The remaining spaces on the property are used for his company vehicles, and he has a lot more of them now than he had before, along with employees who come in, park their car, and then grab one of the company vehicles and head out. So we had all the department head reviews, and everyone came back with no real comments of any substance aside from police, which was concerned about the traffic in and out of the entrance. We're showing a 30-foot wide entry area, and we were creating a landscape island in this area right in here. And the concern was trucks coming up and down. Basically, the delivery is going to come from Route 2, so the trucks coming into the site, coming southbound on Main Street and turning into the site was a question that we were asked of, by the police department on Friday at our tech review meeting. We were able to get a truck out there today, this afternoon. We went out and we had the truck assemble, try to get in and out of the site. At the 30-foot width, it didn't work. We widened it out to 36 feet. And he was able to get in, but in order for him to get in, he would have to travel into the North Brown Lane, the opposite lane, to basically make the swing to come in. So what came out of that was it would be better to leave that open curb the way it is right now. And so what we have is, we've talked to Dan about talking to the neighbor and getting some additional, trying to make up some of the landscape that we're losing on this. So I have another plan, which I sent over, and I can pass this around now, or I can just, actually, the one I can do, bring it up here. I do have copies, though. The current plan that we just submitted electronically shows us basically squaring off these parking spaces, making it more even. There's about a 40-foot width between the curb line on this side and the edge of the parking spaces. So that gives the truck driver plenty of room. We're looking at doing a painted island in this area instead of landscape. That'll basically designate it for a visual effect, to get in and out of sight, to know where the entrance is for most vehicles. And then to make up for the landscaped area, we're actually going to put in landscaping along the building against the parking to kind of soften that parking area in that area as well. So those are really the only, that's the only real change is this area right here on the site plan. Everything else, I believe that all the other department heads had little or no comments regarding this, but I'll let Elizabeth go through that. But we're asking for this to be viewed as a minor change for the project so that we can move forward with getting this construction going and cleaning up the site and getting it finished.
Bill, is there room for trucks to turn around in there?
Yeah, there is. It's, it's- And he did it, he did it today. And now with, like, all the employee vehicles and all the company trucks were there. It's like 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and it was, you know, he, I mean, he might- He might have had a back out, he might have had to do like a one point, but he didn't have to go like 15 times around. I was kind of surprised, so, yeah, he was able- No, 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 he's going to be able to turn around, yeah.
Did you make a turn like that guy from India? Forget it, it was on the news.
I'm not sure if that's a public comment that should be out there. So anyways, aside from that, we're going to improve the drainage. We're going to adjust the striping for the parking. He's working with the neighbor and the police department. You know, he didn't, Sergeant Robichaud didn't want me to put words in his mouth, so I won't, but he felt that this would be something that he could support. But he knows it's up to the board as far as, you know, the layout and stuff like that.
John? See, I'm not sure. I don't have an issue with the plan. I just, this was originally to be something where box trucks were turning into a street, and now we have tractor-trailers coming in. I think it's-
Okay. Let me give you some background. I've known Piper Electric. Their business is primarily homes.
Nope.
Okay, and so he did a lot of residential.
Nope. I'm going to stop you. He's all commercial.
Well, homes are commercial.
Nope. So, so let me, just so we don't box Dan into something that he doesn't want to be boxed into, I don't, I don't disagree that this is a change from what the original plan was. No question about it. But the business model has changed. But us going from a minor modification to a full review is not going to change what we're doing on the project. Okay, so the result is going to be the same. So the idea is, you know, I believe we have all the department head comments, and Elizabeth can update us on that.
That's fair.
You know, we're not going to change anything from the plan between now and October.
That's fair.
How frequently are we expecting trailer trucks coming in now?
Today, we talked about that. Basically, said two to three times a week, but there will be occasions when it's only coming in once, and there will be occasions where they come in five times, you know? So it just depends upon whether they, if they get a big contract for some of their work and they need to have a large order of materials, then they would have to deal with that in that manner.
Do I have, make it a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion that they believe it's a minor modification. Do I have a second to the motion? Do I have a second? Okay, do we have a further discussion on that? Okay, I'll answer the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries, minor modification.
Next.
No, you have to continue with the review.
What's that?
You have to continue with the review and vote with the conditions and everything. You just voted to make it a minor modification, deem it that. But now we are on with the nuts and bolts of deciding what conditions.
Okay, we deem it to minor modification.
May I ask what conditions would be placed on a minor modification aside from the original conditions of the project?
We had a comment from Health. I went through the comments real quick as we were here.
Will you go through the comments?
Yeah.
Do you want me to read the ones that are no comment?
No.
Okay, the one that's outstanding is Health Department. All trucks shall comply with the noise ordinance. Section 14-8, trucks shall not idle for more than five minutes when delivering. And then there was the Police Department comments, which Mr. Hennigan addressed.
That was addressed.
That was addressed, so that was it.
There's a state law regarding idling for vehicles that they have to adhere to anyways. So we have no problem with putting, we have no problem with putting that as a condition.
We already have a city ordinance on that, so.
It's a reminder, I guess, yeah.
Okay. On the minor modification, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept minor modification as presented to us here.
I have a motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Modification on site plan-
Oh, we don't-
For Willard Street, map 500, parcel 2, sole energy storage system. The board will vote to whether it's a major or minor modification. If this is deemed a minor, then the board will review the application at the meeting. If it's deemed a major, it will be open for public meeting at future date. And drainage changes, I think.
This one's obviously minor, so I'll, I'll make a motion unless someone has.
Well, they're going to make the presentation.
We don't have to.
Yeah.
There's not that much.
I've learned, I've learned over time, this is a time to be quiet. For the record, Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering and Tom Corbett with CB, ZP So the, the, the plan that's on the screen right now, that's the approved plan, which shows the different battery systems that were proposed at the time. Since this, since this was approved, the technology's gotten better, and the, on top of that, the butter, or the, actually, the owner, who is, owns the butter parcel, he leased out a portion of the land for some purpose. So we've basically taken the, the site plan and honored the easement that the landowner has given to someone else and shrunk the size of the, of project footprint, which resulted in some changes to the drainage, which reduced the size of the drainage system for the project. So this will need to go in front of conservation for an amended order to basically, just to change the, the, the size and shape and where the detention basin is on the project as well as the other elements, but we're not anticipating that being issued either.
Okay. Yeah, that does look fine. I think in this case, it'd be, be minor modic, voltage to minor modification, and then probably recommendation that the condition of the Conservation Commission.
Which we have to do anyways.
Yeah, which we've got to do anyway, but which we've got to, just say that. So you don't have to come back to us, okay, that the conservation is.
Thank you.
With the approval of conservation, it'd be okay. So, first part, there's, first we have to accept it, is that it is a minor modification.
I move to accept that it's a minor modification.
A motion made and seconded that it is a minor modification. Any further discussion? Here none? Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Motion carries. Now, on the project as it is, with the stipulation that they receive approval or a letter.
Order of conditions.
Letter of intent from the Conservation Commission. Is that correct?
Amended order of conditions.
Yeah.
However you want to word it. Whoever, whoever wants to make the motion.
Some moves.
Motion. Some moves. A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here none, I call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Motion carries. Now, on the project as it is, with the stipulation that they receive approval or a letter.
Order of conditions.
Letter of intent from the Conservation Commission. Is that correct?
Amended order of conditions.
Yeah.
However you want to word it. Whoever, whoever wants to make the motion.
Some moves.
Motion. Some moves. A motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here none, I call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Good luck.
Thanks, Maros, guys.
There was, there was a comment from the Police Department, though, about alarm systems.
Yeah.
That has to be included.
So, Tom Corbett, Zero Point Development. Yeah, so the next steps for us prior to building permit would be coordinating what those electrical schematics need to look like for, or whatever the alarms and notices to the department need to be. So those will be worked on ahead of a building permit.
But that has to be, that has to be a condition.
No, that's in the ordinance.
It's in the original condition.
It's in a, a current ordinance, that you have to have a signalization to the.
Yeah, it's in the new ordinance.
So it's not in the existing ordinance?
On behalf of the Police Department, we have no concerns regarding the property. We only ask that any alarm system follow the new ordinance and that they email the contact information to those responsible to respond to any alarms to alarms@police.lemonster-ma.gov.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's acceptable.
They'll have to follow the ordinance.
Yeah.
So we don't want to, you don't want to put it as a condition, then?
Right.
Okay.
Well, we already voted, so it'll be hard to.
Oh, yeah.
Just, just for clarification, the ordinance is not in place?
Not yet.
Right. So we, we don't want to be subject to the new ordinance. However, that being said, we don't have any issue with the, with the request from the Police Department to follow the new ordinance relative to the alarm system.
And so maybe note that for the record?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't go back anyway, so.
And the, and you didn't say the conservation either, right?
They did the conservation.
You did the conservation, okay.
Right.
I'm just trying to write and listen at the same time.
Okay, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
City Council petition, 326, Glenn Eaton.
6.3.
No, that's Battery, oh, that's a, sorry.
6.3 Battery, Battery.
Battery Energy Storage System Draft Zoning Amendment. Plan Board petition, the City Council. We're going to have a hearing for this.
No, it has to, we have to petition City Council first, and then after we petition City Council, they get a referral.
Don't we have a meeting on it first? Open meeting?
This is, this is that meeting. You, you decide whether or not you're going to petition City.
No, this is not the meeting because it's, it's not scheduled. In the past, we've done things different ways, okay? We have this, we have this petition, okay? We schedule here for an open meeting. It's not a, not a public hearing, or, or it is, it could be a public hearing, well, depends what we decide. We discuss it, and then we send it to the City Council.
This is the discussion right now.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the discussion.
We always put it on.
We could open it for discussion now.
Discuss it, and then you guys tell the, tell Elizabeth to petition or not petition.
And we can do it both ways. Nobody's, everybody's had a chance to read it and look at it. I know I have, okay? What you wish, you wanted to, well, we're, early enough tonight.
We can discuss it tonight.
Let's discuss.
It's only 7:00 o'clock.
There's not that much to discuss.
Okay.
This was sent to the mayor and to the building official. The building official came back, no comment, and the mayor did not comment.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so in the, what, what we've done is, is because we've looked at a lot of different things and online and what they have. We've looked at, I don't know, how many different cities and towns, Elizabeth?
There were only like five.
About five, but some were, I think Amherst was about 25 pages, okay? Somebody else was one page. And actually, I'll give Lunenburg credit. They had a pretty good one, but it was geared more towards their battery storage is in a rural area. So they were dealing more with rural properties a little bit more than we were. I looked into different, and it's incorporated in here in distances as far as different sizes and things like that. Could not get anything from any kind of fire or looking on online, any kind of.
And Ryan.
Explosive, let's say, energy requirements from anybody.
And Ryan Young, the, from the Fire Department, did his own search and did, came up with no recommendation on that.
Yeah, and they, they haven't, what we have is the, the Fire Department's looked at and is satisfied, because there was some discussion is that, you know, to be, and we've done it, to go a little further out, to give enough clearance as they get the more, you know, more wattage, larger units, you know, they, and this seems to be with the, with the requirements we have in here, it's covered in the, the signalization requirements that we require in here, that, so we picked and choose from, well, Elizabeth did most of the work from, from the different ordinance that we had. So, so that's what we had in front of you that we want to give to the, the City Council, and then, then we'll have something in writing to cover. And I think we're going to see more of these battery storage units, you know, in the future. But like we saw today, they're getting, they're actually getting smaller.
They're promoting a lot.
Yeah.
But this has a setback, Senate, and has a decommissioning bond.
Yeah.
It's always good, yeah, always good.
So it seems like we, we've tried to cover the bases. Like I said, pick and choose is probably about 1/5 the size of.
All right, I make a motion to petition the City Council, to have the Planning Director petition the City Council.
Okay. I have a motion made and seconded to the Plant Director petition.
Did you want to open it to, to anybody? Or that we don't, this is just the board, and when we have the public hearing, that's when the public talks, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not always.
Not always. We can't open it up if there's a, if, I, I can't open it up if we want.
We have people here.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Please come to the speaker, to the mic.
Just state your name and address, please.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Kathy Degnold, 107.
Oh, is that who you are?
Highland Avenue. Hey, John, good evening. I just was curious about, generally speaking, what the dimensions of the changes for that battery storage project, not because I was in favor or opposed, but I'm just curious what is the dimensions? It was like 120 by 120, and then it went from 120 to 170. It went down by 50 feet.
So, yeah.
It's more.
Right, smaller. Yeah, so I was just curious if there was any, I, I saw it on the agenda tonight, there isn't any proposed, you're just using setbacks for.
Well, yeah, it, it, there are, there are setbacks on the property lines, and that always was on the, that's on the original plan.
Right, I know, but what evaluation, just general building setbacks is, was, was my question? You know, I, we don't have an ordinance, do we?
For the zones, yes.
Yeah, just for a general building.
Yeah, we didn't have anything in place.
Right.
So when this came forward, we, this is why we're responding.
That's why we have the new ordinance.
That's why I'm piping up. Yeah, I'm just more curious than, than, you know, I am not here in opposition or in favor, I'm more trying to understand what the city is doing in regards to this. So you're proposing that you're going to put it before the City Council and it will get evaluated?
Exactly.
All right.
So we have this, we have this one here, this off of Willard Street, there's another one on Central Street, right across from the, the fire headquarters, okay?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much. I just didn't see a, I, I just didn't see anything anywhere that I could look at or read, and I might myself get a question about it, so I want to get educated. I certainly think it's an excellent, you know, use of, you know, energy storage. We need it, so I was just curious. Is this mine?
That's yours.
Dr. Weiser, thank you. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, do I have any other, anyone else that has a question? Okay, a motion made and seconded to refer this to the City Council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Motion carries. Now we go with City Council petition, 3.26. Glenn Eaton, Executive Director, Monmouth Regional Planning Commission, request to amend the zoning ordinance to replace Article 15 accessory apartments with new Article 15 that complies with recently passed state law and make other changes to implement the new ordinance. Plan Board to schedule for open public hearing. So we have to schedule this.
We have to schedule it. You have, well, on the 15th, you have two, two items, and then on the 6th, you have three items.
Is this a big change in state law that's going to affect this dramatically, or?
It's already in effect as of February 2nd. We have to follow it anyway.
The rise of zoning.
Yeah, it overwrote, primarily, as I understand, I haven't read it yet, it, it brings our zoning into compliance with what the state is already required.
Is it an emergency?
So, yeah, okay.
Well, the City Council has their hearing, so they, they do want to hear back from us. So it helps them if we can do it sooner.
We still have to have Glenn sitting here for four hours until we can hear from him. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So if we can get him in the first thing on the second meeting.
Schedule it for 6:32 instead of.
I mean, I guess we have a little window over there, but.
Yeah, if there's no rush.
Just saying, maybe first, out of the gate on the second October meeting, so he's not sitting here all night long.
At 6:32?
No.
6:30.
We already have something on October 6, on the 20th.
We have it except October 6.
You're talking about the 20th.
We already got some.
Um, we don't have anything on the 20th, we have a clear schedule.
And there's no problem waiting that long?
Um, I don't know, we do have someone from the Council here, I might defer to her. I think the Council wants to move it along, and they have their hearing scheduled, they're going to have to continue it.
Yeah, because they can't hear it, they can't have a hearing until, or they can, have to continue their hearing until they get ours. Want, do it on the 6th. I would do it on the 6th.
Or, what if we did it in the September meeting, just put it two minutes before the Orchard Park thing? Because this will be quick. Get that out of the way.
No, it could be longer, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
You think this will take time?
It's going to be shorter than that.
I mean, if all this is the same.
I think the Council would prefer we did it that way. I'm not, I don't speak for the Council at all in any way, I just know they.
What time did we continue the Orchard Park hearing till?
Right.
Um, one's at 6:30, one's at 6:35.
Let's do it at 6:31.
Yeah.
6:31.
And that way it'll be off everybody's plate.
Then then we'll have Orchard Park out, yeah. That way we'll get it done, we'll forward to.
Yeah.
What's that, 6:30?
Okay.
It's that.
I have a motion made and seconded for.
It's a parking area.
What's that date?
September.
September 15th.
September 15th, the 6:31.